To order. Leanna, please take the roll call.
Sharon Harvey?
Here.
Erica Ron?
Here.
Mr. Romo?
Here.
Ralph Sherman?
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. Please join me in the prayer, in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a possible motion for an executive session?
I don't see one.
Our superintendent, Dr. Stone, will now recognize our 2024 retirees.
Good evening. Tonight, we are here to recognize the collective years of experience in this room and the positive impact each of these people have had in our district, serving both staff and students. As we call each person up tonight, please slide all the way down to your right and stay standing so we may take a picture of all our retirees after they have been recognized. So we are going to start with Sam Brenda from the high school. I do not have the write-up that everyone else may receive, however, because Sam was supposed to leave, but we do want to recognize him here for a moment. So Sam is our Lake Havasu High School audiovisual teacher. For those of you that don't know, he has an amazing program that teaches sound production to our kids. He is behind the scenes for all of the things that happen at the pack. He makes sure our pianos are tuned. He makes sure the lights come on and that the sound is good. He also came into the school system and received his wish from someone who said, "What kind of equipment do you need?" They gave him a million dollars to create the studio that is at the high school now and serves our kids. So we can't thank Sam enough. I'm very sad to see him go, but I also know retirement's going to be amazing thing for him. So. Next, we have Marnetta Anderson from Havasupai Elementary School, first-grade teacher. So Mrs. Anderson's commitment to her first-grade students shines through her passionate and caring approach. She is known for placing the success of her students first and cultivates a classroom environment where students find joy in learning. She continuously creates a dynamic learning atmosphere where each student feels valued and supported. In her years of service to the district, she has found a knack for supporting both academic achievement and a love for learning in her students. A love of learning is a gift that carries her students to success far after they leave her classroom. Congratulations. And next, we have Bonnie Brazil from Human Resources. She is our payroll specialist. So Bonnie has been with the district during several transformational processes. She was part of the transition of the district's payroll and finance software. Her work in this system has dramatically improved the efficiency of payroll processing. In addition to her work with payroll, Bonnie has been known to be a kind, steady source of support for our staff and exemplify customer service. Her heart for helping others has been a tremendous strength that will be deeply missed. We wish her well in retirement as she continues to share her kindness and joy with her friends and family. Congratulations. Next, we have Maria Cartwright from Thunderbolt Middle School. She is a special education teacher. Mrs. Cartwright has greatly influenced LHUSD in a lasting way since the year 2000, teaching English at the high school and then teaching resource classes at Thunderbolt. In addition to helping hundreds of students be successful, she has mentored and taught many teachers throughout her years to ensure their success. As the Thunderbolt Special Ed Department Chair, Mrs. Cartwright provided leadership, guidance, and encouragement to all staff on how to scaffold and meet the needs of every learner in their classroom by continuously modeling going above and beyond for students, coworkers, and families with a positive can-do attitude. Congratulations. Next, we have Lori Hunter, also from Thunderbolt Middle School, special education teacher. Mrs. Hunter has been an asset to LHUSD for 30 years and has worked with ages kindergarten through eighth grade, designing individualized instructional strategies for students with special learning needs. She has changed the lives of many students by helping them to be successful in meeting their goals. Her ability to move students beyond their comfort zone has set her apart in her work. Mrs. Hunter has ensured that every child felt valued, special, and safe within her classroom. She has mentored new teachers and inspired all of us as she embodied every student every day, whatever it takes. Congratulations. Next, we have Sharon Neese, Havasupai Elementary School, fourth-grade teacher. Mrs. Neese exemplifies dedication to her students, infusing her teaching with a contagious passion that inspires student growth and achievement. Her commitment extends beyond the classroom as she helped plan and facilitate PBIS reward assemblies that the Havasupai students loved. She continually seeks ways to meet the diverse needs of every student, was also a reading interventionist during her years of service to the district. Every day, she ensures that each student receives the support and encouragement they need to thrive academically and personally. Mrs. Neese's efforts create an environment where every student is equipped for success. Congratulations. Next, we have Elaine Quinn from Student Services, a speech therapist. Mrs. Quinn's positive impact on LHUSD and the Lake Havasu City community will continue on for generations, thanks not only to her service to students, but through her active mentoring of countless speech-language pathologists and SLP assistants throughout her tenure. Her contribution to the district has allowed for the development of staff and programs. Mrs. Quinn has been an integral part of the developmental preschool team for multiple decades. She will be remembered by her very calm demeanor and tone, which have helped ease the transition into special education for many families over the years. Congratulations. And next, we have Barbara Smith from Smoke Tree Elementary School, a paraprofessional. Mrs. Smith's commitment to go above and beyond in every task will be a hallmark of her time at Smoke Tree. She has demonstrated a remarkable ability to solve problems with grace and ingenuity, which facilitated a smoother learning environment and inspired those around her to strive for excellence. Her efforts to help students learn to read and write have laid the foundation for their academic success and empowered them with invaluable skills that will carry, that they will carry with them for a lifetime. Thank you, Mrs. Smith, for your years of service and unwavering dedication. Congratulations. A few of our retirees were unable to attend this evening, however, we would like to thank them for their service. Roberta Hayes from Student Services, Cynthia Jacconi from Jamaica Elementary School, Shannon Christic from Jamaica Elementary School, Keith Little from Maintenance, Tony Monda from Maintenance, Patricia Rivera from Havasupai Elementary School, and Kara Squera from Student Services. We know the work done in a school district would not be possible without the many skilled staff like those we have honored tonight. We are grateful for all of you and your contributions to LHUSD. Thank you and happy retirement. Gina is your picture taker, so if you will move to this side.
Thank you for your service. Leanna, do we have any calls to the public? Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to accept it as stated?
I move that we accept it as stated.
Is there a second? I'll second. Yes.
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 All right, we have no discussion items, so we'll move on to the action items. Six point one, student achievement. Lake Havasu High School, new course approval, Dr. Festa Dagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, Lake Havasu High School is committed to providing students with courses that meet their needs and will prepare them for the future. LHHS is requesting additional courses that are currently not in their course catalog. Previously, Lake Havasu High School used the course title of Read 180 for courses using the Read 180 Intervention Program. LHHS will be discontinuing the use of Read 180 and the use of the adopted English curriculum and supplement the curriculum with Rosetta Stone for Students Learning English (EL) learners and IXL for students performing below grade level and/or special education students. These courses will be titled SEI (English Language Development 1-2), Alternate ELA 1, Alternate ELA 2, Alternate ELA 3, Alternate ELA 4, Alternate ELA 5, Alternate ELA 6, and Alternate ELA 7-8. In addition, Ceramics 1-2 is being offered to allow students to have another option in choosing a fine arts credit. Ceramics will focus on creating three-dimensional works out of clay and ceramic material. Particular attention is paid to the characteristics of the raw materials, their transformation under heat, and the various methods used to create and finish objects. These courses have been recommended by the LHHS administration for the 24-25 school year. They are approved courses for credit as defined by the Arizona Board of Regents.
Any discussion or a motion?
I move that we approve six point one as presented.
I'll second, but I would like to leave some time for discussion.
I do have some concerns on it. The ELA makes perfect sense. You know, it's just a renaming and why name it over the other one? With the ceramics, I'm curious to why there's no lab fee, because I know there's a lot of consumables that go along with it.
So it is against Arizona statute to charge a lab fee for any courses other than career and technical education?
Do we have the facilities for ceramics and equipment for it?
Yes, I believe so. So currently, ceramics was a class that was previously offered, but going back through records, we could not find that it was part of the approved course catalog, and so it was brought back today. But the materials are there.
Do we have an instructor?
Yes, there is an instructor that that's a field of expertise.
Yes, because I know that that's an issue, because you're dealing with chemicals, very much with the glazes and, of course, the kiln. My last concern is kind of procedural, because I know in the past, we had had kind of a deadline of approving courses for the next year before December. Excuse me, sorry, good food. Before December. And it was kind of an informal policy. I didn't see it in our guidelines. I'm just wondering if the counselors kind of are aware and have helped the students because it wasn't, you know, it wasn't ready for them to enroll in and how they're planning to do that for next year.
So this course was created to really ensure that there were full courses at all of for the two art teachers and to ensure that there was enough elective. So this was like going back and looking through the schedule and knowing there was a need to provide an additional elective, because additional electives are short supply. So the general routine is that it comes in December. This was done afterward because of an issue with the schedule.
In the future, I'd like to see us work up a policy and work up a, you know, a timeline. I suggest administration, faculty, counselors, all be in that discussion and bring it before the board so that we can have something that we can put out there to the teachers, because I know a lot of time the teachers and the counselors are running around trying to figure things out, but I would like to see that in the future, so.
Yeah, and so typically, the way that the courses go are through the teachers, through the department chair, the department chair to the principal, and the principal to me, who brings it on behalf, and so we'll make sure that that's clearly outlined.
Yeah, I think just having that formally. Not against ceramics, I think it's a good idea, but I just wanted to get those concerns addressed.
And then I had one question about the ELA program. So does Thunderbolt still use Read 180, or has that, have they phased that out? Thunderbolt is not using Read 180, but Thunderbolt courses were called intervention, and they aren't approved necessarily by the board. Board policy and statute requires high school classes for credit to come before the board. Okay. And there's no concern that they'll have any trouble, like, matching up what they learned in middle school with them the next level in high school? So they're both going to be using the core curriculum and IXL? Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
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 Six point two, Student Services Memorandum of Understanding with Southwest Behavioral Health Services. Mr. Moss?
Thank you. This memorandum of understanding establishes a formal commitment between parties to support collaborative work in better understanding and addressing the behavioral and social needs of at-risk students and families in our district. District Policy 5411 authorizes referrals of eligible students for behavioral health services with parent consent. Southwest Behavioral Health Services will make services available on school campuses under the shared direction of Southwest Behavioral Health Services and Lake Havasu Unified for those students enrolled in services through Southwest Behavioral Health. This partnership will allow for better collaboration between families, teachers, and school personnel to aid students and families in receiving services. Parent consent is required to participate in the program. This memorandum will be for one year and has been reviewed by Student Services and Legal.
Any discussion or a motion?
I move we adopt six point two as presented. Second?
And then I just want to add that I am very glad to see this coming to our schools. I want to underscore the fact that it does require parental consent, but I have heard from multiple people who are looking for therapeutic services or counseling services, that we live in a city where that's very hard to find those types of services, and so I'm glad that we're able to have them in our schools, again, with that parent consent piece.
Yes.
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 Six point three, Business Services. Food Service Management Company Award of Contract. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. On March 19th, 2019, the district's governing board awarded the bid for Food Service Management Services to Tahoe Incorporated. That contract was valid for a maximum of five years and will expire at the end of the 23-24 school year. On January 11th, 2024, after review and approved by the Arizona Department of Education, an RFP was emailed to the food service vendors on the district's bidders list. The RFP was also posted on the district website. Food Service Management Company proposals were due to the district by 2:10 p.m. on February 29th, 2024. Four food service management companies submitted proposals, Tahoe, SFE, Genuine Foods, and Chartwell's. The proposals were reviewed and evaluated by a committee comprised of Pauline Whiteside, procurement specialist, Gina Flores, food service technologist, and Ann Tafe, child nutrition supervisor. The proposals were evaluated according to the criteria as stated in the RFP. After the evaluations were completed, it was determined that Tahoe received the highest total number of points. A summary of evaluation points is attached for the board's review. Tahoe's proposal and all evaluation sheets were forwarded to the Arizona Department of Education on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. Pending approval by the Arizona Department of Education and the LHUSD Governing Board, the offer and award form and Certificate of Independent Price Determination Form will be signed and submitted to ADE. The awarded contract to Tahoe would be for the 2024-25 school year, with the possibility of up to four annual renewals. And just an update to that, the Arizona Department of Education did approve, did offer their approval on their behalf, but they're just waiting for the governing board to do so on our end.
I move that we approve the award of the contract to Tahoe.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to ask, when, you know, you guys were scoring them, I saw the scores. Can you give us more of a qualitative, what they do better than the others?
So I will yield to Ann Tafe. She's our child nutrition coordinator, food service supervisor, and as part of the evaluation committee, she can offer more insight.
Good evening. After going over the four proposals and following the rubric, Tahoe, we, the way our district is set up, we're pretty unique compared to other ones. We only have cooking facilities in two of our kitchens, the high school and the middle school, so all of our food has to be transported to all the sites. Tahoe's done a great job doing that. The other companies and their proposals didn't even address that fact, though they knew that that's how we operate. Another thing, two of the companies are, Chartwell's is the largest food service management company in the world. SFE is in the top 10. Tahoe is quite a bit smaller, though they are large, but they let us, the district, have as much input into what we're doing compared to the big companies that operate all from a location somewhere else by their standards, and we don't get as much input as we do currently. I'm able to, after years of doing this, I get a lot of surplus-type food through USDA that every day I look on this list, so far this year, we've utilized over $75,000 of this extra product that with a lot of these big companies, they've already designed our menus for, you know, for the next year, and so this doesn't work into how their presentation is. And with Tahoe, Chris and I work good with that, and I'm like, here, I'm getting all this chicken, find a way to use it. And so it's been very cost-effective for us. So that was one of the major factors there. Otherwise, the prices were all pretty close, and just the benefit of being able to have the district put our input in is really a big selling point.
I agree. Thank you so much.
And it did, it did come down to management fees, and so there, that was heavily looked at as well. Tahoe, if I remember right, came up pretty comparable to most. There were, I believe, one that had, their fee was structured a little bit better as far as cost goes, but then, what Ann just mentioned, there's a lot of other guarantees that are put in place, so if we don't hit certain milestones, then that guarantee is off the table, which then can cost the district more money in the long run. But there were the other, I believe, two other companies that had higher management fees than Tahoe, who's being proposed and brought before you tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I was, sorry. And that's good feedback about the flexibility. I didn't know that. I don't have any other questions for you. I just wanted to make a general remark about, this is a very easy yes for me. I am, I've been very impressed with Tahoe over the years. It doesn't feel like a food service that is just limited to the cafeteria. I feel like their employees really make a point of reaching out. Just as an example, the community often gets invited to lunches. The last one that I went to was at the middle school, and not only do they invite community members, but then they also involve the students in the food preparation. The kids did like a table scape and learned how to carve fruits into different shapes, and they served us, and so I feel like, I don't actually know if that's the industry standard amongst food service providers, but it does feel like Tahoe goes the extra mile, and so I really appreciate that.
Yes.
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 Six point four, Business Services. Lake Havasu High School Athletics, Girls' Flag Football, Approval to Add Sport.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. During the 22-23 school year, the Arizona Interscholastic Association implemented a pilot program for girls' flag football. The program did extremely well, and girls' flag football was introduced as a sanctioned sport with the AIA for the 2023-2024 school year. During the 23-24 school year, 54 schools implemented girls' flag football, and 107 schools in the AIA are anticipated and registered for the 2024-25 school year. Pending school district slash board approval, AIA has already approved us to be eligible next year in the Northwest Valley region. Currently, girls' flag football will only be offered at the varsity level. The season is comprised of a 10-12 game schedule, five or six home games, and five or six away games, with games typically played on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Costs to implement the sport are approximately $10,000 for uniforms, $1,100 for equipment, and $3,500 for a head coach stipend, and 25 for an assistant coach stipend, and the Athletic Booster Club approved the provision of $15,000 to be applied towards these costs. We do have Mr. Zampona, the athletic director, here with us tonight as well, should you have additional questions.
I move that we approve six point four as presented.
And I'll second.
I have a couple of questions. Come on up, Dustin. So first question is, I'm just wanting to know, like, the interest level that you kind of see?
How many students participated in the pilot program?
Okay, so I'll first address the interest. So if anyone's ever been to a powder puff game here, we have like 60-plus girls that participate in the powder puff game, so that coupled with what the AIA has already implemented, the interest is extremely high. Just this morning, actually, I had somebody who asked, "Has it gone to the board yet? Is it approved? Can we get this started?" I mean, they're itching. I mean, every conversation I've had with parents, athletes, students, I mean, they're excited. I mean, they see it on TV, the Arizona Cardinals had a big sponsorship program this year, so it's not just in Arizona, it's across the country.
Is it 11-on-11?
It's eight men, or eight women, I guess. Yep, eight on eight, yep.
About how many generally end up on a team?
So, I mean, that's dependent upon the schools, the districts, the size. We are anticipating about 40. That's our hope, at least. I mean, I've seen teams like Mountain Point down in Phoenix has had like up to 60, Chandler, the real big schools, but without a JV level, we're anticipating about 40.
When I was looking at this, the only thing that kind of stuck out to me was the $10,000 for uniforms, because I went online with BSN, and it seemed like it was about $100 for the jersey and shorts, and even with 40, that seemed to be about $4,000, and not the six to 10.
Right, so I actually had, we got three proposals from BSN, and they range anywhere from about $5,700 all the way up to $15,000, depending on the name brand. depending on the name, brand, the style, the color. And the AIA has specific dimensions and policies that we have to follow. The size of the numbers on the jerseys and the uniforms, the placement of the numbers, the placement of, like, if you want, you know, a little emblem, even the size of the Nike emblem, they have specific regulations on it.
How much do you anticipate it is for about one uniform?
I have it right here, actually.
Just curious.
So, I mean, again, we're waiting to hire a coach because I want our coach to have buy-in on what the uniforms actually look like. But just for example, the $7,000 one, which is a juke through the BSN brand, it's $44.50 for the top and $42.50 for the bottom.
So about 100 bucks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And taxes and shipping and...
Will the students get to keep the garments, or?
No, we don't anticipate having them keep them so that we can use them for years to come.
So what happens to, as an athletic director, what happens to the money? Like, let's say we do it, and we had 40 kids, and it was $4,000. What happens to that six to 10 that you've...
The remaining? So it was through the Booster Club, and it was to not exceed the $15,000 that they're willing to donate for us. So if we don't use it, I mean, it just stays with the Booster Club.
Thank you.
Of course.
And then, because it's an AIA-operated sport, will the participants and their parents still go through the standard concussion?
Absolutely. They'll have the same, it'll be the same requirements as any other sport. It will all through, still be through Register My Athlete. They'll have to have physicals, baseline concussion testing, the whole nine.
Yes.
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 6.5 Business Services, Job Order Contracting, JOC. Construction Services, Smoke Tree Elementary, Interior and Site Renovations. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As part of the district's commitment to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities, as communicated to voters and identified in the November 2016 Bond Voter Pamphlet, the district is recommending site renovations at Smoke Tree Elementary and interior renovations to Smoke Tree Preschool. The scope of work of site renovations to Smoke Tree Elementary, while not a comprehensive list, will include the following: grading, fencing, paving, coating of parking lot and drives, grass fields, concrete walkways, seat walls, stairs, ramps. The scope of work of interior renovations to Smoke Tree Preschool, while not a comprehensive list, will include the following: preschool office and therapy rooms, reconfiguration and remodel, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, carpentry, flooring, student restroom reconfiguration and remodel, plumbing, tile, painting, carpentry. Concord General Contracting will be procured as a JOC through the One GPA Cooperative Contract. Board Policy 3-109 states the maximum dollar amount of an individual job order for a job order contracting construction service shall be $2 million unless otherwise specifically authorized by the board. Concord's submitted proposal for site renovations totaled $3,655,011, or $3,655,011. The district requests a not-to-exceed approval in the amount of $3,750,000 to provide owner contingency funds during the construction process. Concord's submitted proposal for preschool interior renovation totals $841,535. The district requests a not-to-exceed approval in the amount of $950,000 to provide owner contingency funds during the construction process. Bond and/or other allowable capital funds, including adjacent ways, if the Division of School Facilities approves, will be used to fund the project. This item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
I'll make a motion that we approve 6.5 as presented.
I'll second.
Just a quick overall question. This is kind of the last of our, you know, going through the schools for our bond money that we did in 2016 of all the improvements, and this one is the last one.
Correct. This is number eight of eight.
Yes. And you mentioned that the DSF money could be approved. If it is approved, about how much?
So that was around, in the proposal that's attached, that has been revised a little bit. It's a little more than $300,000 for their portion. Well, it's not, it's not their portion, it's adjacent ways money that would be used. But the Division of School Facilities must review the request to use adjacent ways monies, and then they give their approval for it. So we already have adjacent ways monies that came to the district even before I came here. That's, it's another taxation on the community to acquire those funds via tax. When I got here, that money kept coming, but we wasn't going back out. So when I came to this position, I didn't, my first year in budgeting, I didn't come to the board to ask for an additional levy for adjacent ways monies until we, as a group, figured out what we were going to do with it. I didn't see the usefulness of bringing more taxpayer money into the system when we were not using it. So now we've started to utilize the money for projects such as this. And adjacent ways money can be used for ingress and egress on our properties. So that is for fire buses, so that they can enter the property and the facility, have clear passage throughout the property. And those pathways are what is actually used, or adjacent ways funding is actually used to make that happen. So adjacent ways monies, so this is the long version, but I want to make sure people are clear with it. Adjacent ways funds, in this case, will be used for all the drives of the parking lots. So the entrances and exits, the fire lanes, all of the areas in which a fire truck would have to navigate through the campus to stage or to access the campus. So once DSF hopefully approves that we can use these monies, which I don't see why they won't, we will shift some of those costs to the adjacent ways fund and not utilize bond or capital monies for it.
I appreciate those details.
So I apologize for those who had to sit through that.
This all goes back to Steve Greeley and myself when we were running the campaign back in the day, and we got the money into the bank.
For the bond.
For the bond, yes.
Correct.
That's what it actually all came about.
Yes.
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 6.6 Business Services, Job Order Contracting, JOC. Construction Services, Starline Elementary, Student Restrooms.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As part of the district's commitment to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities, as communicated to voters and identified in the November 2016 Bond Voter Pamphlet, the district is recommending to renovate two student restrooms at Starline Elementary. The scope of work, while not a comprehensive list, will include the following: remove and replace restroom partitions, remove and replace sinks, faucets, and miscellaneous plumbing parts and components, remove and replace floor and wall tile, repair and replace drywall and paint. Concord General Contracting will be procured as a JOC through the One GPA Cooperative Contract. Board Policy 3-109 states the maximum dollar amount of an individual job order for a job order contracting construction service shall be $2 million unless otherwise specifically authorized by the board. Concord's submitted proposal totals $222,686. The district requests a not-to-exceed approval in the amount of $250,000 for the project to provide owner contingencies during the renovation process. Bond and/or other allowable capital funds will be used to complete the project. This item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
Thank you. Is there a motion or any discussion?
I move that we approve it.
I second.
Yes.
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 6.7 Business Services, Job Order Contracting, JOC. Construction Services, Jamaica Elementary, Interior Renovations.
Thank you, Madam President, board members. As part of the district's commitment to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities, as communicated to voters and identified in the November 2016 Bond Voter Pamphlet, the district is recommending to renovate and reconfigure a classroom and student restroom at Jamaica Elementary. The scope of work, while not a comprehensive list, will include the following: removing and installing interior restroom and classroom walls, removing and installing floor tile in the restroom, reconfiguring plumbing fixtures and electrical, relocation of fire monitoring and communication devices. Concord General Contracting will be procured as a JOC through the One GPA Cooperative Contract. Board Policy 3-109 states the maximum dollar amount of an individual job order for a job order contracting construction service shall be $2 million unless otherwise specifically authorized by the board. Concord's submitted proposal totals $135,751. The district requests a not-to-exceed approval in the amount of $175,000 for the project and to provide owner contingency funds during the renovation process. Bond and/or other allowable capital funds will be used to complete the project, and this item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
I move we approve 6.7 as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 6.8 Business Services, 2023-24 Budget Revision Number Two.
Thank you, Madam President, board members. The revised 23-24 budget includes financial adjustments to the overall budget limit based upon funding changes that have occurred since budget revision number one of the annual budget in December. Per ARS 15-905, the governing board shall approve the revised budget and any over expenditures in any of the following programs within the MNO budget for the fiscal year, while not overspending the overall budget limit: regular education, special education, and pupil transportation. The district does not expect an over expenditure in any of the funded areas mentioned above at this time. However, per ARS 15-905G, if there needs to be an over expenditure in any of the programs, we must have board approval prior to the end of the fiscal year. The maintenance and operation expenditures will not exceed the overall budget limit. The revised budget must be approved by the governing board by May 15th and uploaded to ADE by May 18th. And I do have a presentation. So on the screen in front of you, this is the same presentation with some minor adjustments to numbers as budget revision number one. It's the same process as any budget revision. So I'm just going to, again, review the slides for you and then point out the changes that have occurred since December. So the budget revised presentation includes the reports, average daily membership, budget revision number two, and financial transparency. That's what you'll see in this presentation. You'll see screenshot here of the reports that are used. Through the Department of Ed, we receive those. You can see small little red checkmarks on some of those. So I use these to tie out the state's numbers and information that we receive to then revise our budget to make sure that we reconcile with the state. Average daily membership consists of prior year and current year and reconciling to ADE. The first slide continue, or the slide that contains a graphic screenshot of the budget forms, the actual budget forms. This is a small snippet of the data entries section, the tab within the budget form, where we then input, I input the average daily membership as given through the Department of Ed. I plug it into the Excel spreadsheet and this budget form. And then from here, it begins to calculate actual dollars. You can see there that the green arrow going up to that top right section, that's from previous fiscal years. So they show a historical look for fiscal year '22 and then fiscal year '23 right below that. And then that section in red shows actual current year fiscal year '24 estimated student count. So we need to remember that we're on a current year funding model. So that has been fun, to say the least, to forecast what your enrollment would look like in the future. So we're not going off of previous year data to then give us really solid numbers throughout the entire year. Current year funding requires you to kind of forecast as to what your enrollment's going to look like throughout the current year. And then you're making adjustments accordingly. So you can see in that red section down below, when you're looking at preschool, kindergarten through eighth grade, and nine through 12, when you're accounting for our students who are in the classroom, and also students who are online, both full-time equivalent and part-time equivalent. We have a total of 4,862 students, roughly 4,862 students. There's some numbers on the back of that, but for rounding purposes, 4,862 for fiscal year '24 as of the last several weeks. The next slide shows, again, another screenshot of several other data areas within the budget forms. The top screenshot that you see has to do with our student weights by category. So this section is primarily looking at the students who receive special services within the district, as well as our K3 student counts. We do receive some additional weights to those particular students, which helps our overall funding. This is not just unique to the Lake Havas Unified School District, this is something that happens throughout the state. You can see on the bottom section there, that's the actual snippet of the report that I received from ADE. I take those numbers populated into the spreadsheet or the budget forms. And this is where, again, we start to calculate actual dollars behind our student enrollment. So our budget revision and reconciling to ADE, I showed you the reports on that. One of the first screenshots there, the first slides in this presentation. Here's a more blown-up look at the Budget 25 Report that we look at. This is to help us to reconcile to ADE in the MNO fund. The next slide shows us page seven of the budget form. And you can see column A, we'll focus on column A at this time, and column B will be for capital. But for maintenance and operations, when you look at our student enrollment and those student counts that I showed you when I populated the budget reports about two slides ago, the number of students that we receive plus the base support level that the state provides us per weighted student brings us to a total of $34,301,294. That is budgeted and placed there in the maintenance and operations section. We have a current override at 1.7 million. We have carryforward in the amount of 17 million. And we have additional funding that comes to the state by way of Prop 123 for $357,495. We have a one-time allowance that's been given to us at the state level last year, and that is for this actual fiscal year that we're currently in, at just over 1.4 million. So our over, our total budget, general budget limit for maintenance and operations is just over $55 million. That's that number circled in the red under column A. In the second column, that's for unrestricted capital outlay, that's our capital funding. You can see there that we received three, just over $3 million in capital money. And that's the total, again, at the bottom, that's circled in red. On the next slide, this is our MNO sheet. This is page one of the actual budget forms. You can see in the bottom right corner, that number is 55,223,205. That ties out to the previous slide where we actually qualify from the state to receive that amount. If I don't budget to that number, there's a code that pops up just down below that red circle that says you either over-budgeted or you've under-budgeted your capacity. So then that tells me I need to go back in and reallocate funds. So these, this area shows where we've budgeted for salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, et cetera. I always put the little legend down on the bottom left for anybody to reference so they can see what 6,100 salaries actually looks like, or what it's comprised of, just some examples. And the same for 6,200, and purchase services, supplies, and other. So that's there for people to reference outside of this meeting, should you have any questions. The next slide shows the capital side of the Budget 25 Report. That's the side that, where we received about $3 million additional from the state for capital purchases. So that's the page that I get from ADE that I tie out to, to make sure that our budget aligns with them. So that's the page that I get from ADE that I tie out to, to make sure that our budget aligns with them. The following slide, the next slide, is page eight of the actual budget form. And this is, this shows where we started at the beginning of the year with capital monies that carried forward. It shows the expenditures that we made last fiscal year so that we can truly tie out to what we had, how much we spent, the final number last year, because that doesn't actually get finalized until like October. So that's already partway into this fiscal year. So this allows us to true up with the state. And then you can see that the unexpendant budget amount is 6.7 million. And then you can see just down near the second, from the bottom, that second blue arrow, there's your $3 million, a little over $3 million that we saw back on one of the previous slides. So when you take what was left over and carried forward from the previous fiscal year plus the new $3 million that we receive, we're approximately $9.7 million with capital funding. So as I mentioned, the budget revisions do May 15. We stress fiscal transparency. We've been trying to do our best with that ever since I've been here, trying to... I know we can always do better, but we try to be very transparent. We try to point people in the right direction. We try to be open and approachable to anyone who has questions. And then this is just another area in which the public can access our financials through our website on this last page. Here's a screenshot of the website with our website URL right there, lhusd.org. And that's the summary of budget revision number two.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. That's fantastic. Great work. Any motions or discussions?
I move that we accept the adjustments as presented.
I'll second. Also, I wanted to thank you for just the financial transparency and the fact that this is available for the public, so...
Yeah, and just echoing what Kyle said is the financial transparency and also the willingness to answer any questions. We know, you know, these school finances are nuts. They're a moving target and they change as they, you know, as the days change. And I do appreciate the details that you give. Even though it can be long, I appreciate it.
Yes.
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 6.9 Business Services Vouchers, Student Activity Funds, and Auxiliary Funds. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Approval of vouchers and student activity funds, as well as auxiliary funds for April of 2024 are in front of you tonight in this item.
I move that we approve the financials as presented.
I'll second. Yes.
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 Does Dr. Stone have anything to inform us?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. This is the time of year for lots of awards and to celebrate the many things that our students do. In our elementary evenings of excellence, we had 132 students who were recognized for the President's Award for Achievement and/or Significant Growth or Improvement in an area. At the middle school, we had 82 students who achieved either the President's Award, a 4.0, or the National Student Council or National Honor Society Award. Last night was the scholarship evening at the high school. There were 18 students who committed to the military and at least over $2 million, I believe, in scholarships. So that, that number will be shared at a later time, but it was quite impressive. From a CTE perspective, we had 259 industry credentials that were earned this year by our students. They are able to take those and often be able to go into the workforce if they choose to do so at that time. And one last thing, our students in Mr. Malinger's class have been playing, there's a business team, and they've been playing the stock market game all year. They placed 10th out of 800 teams nationwide. And they were, they are getting an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C. to participate in the final competition there. So some very impressive work by our students and just a great end to the year.
Great. Do the governing board members have anything to bring to us?
Kind of an expansion on that. I was able to attend a couple of events through the schools this past week. One of them was the STEM event that's at Smoke Tree. I will try to do a better job of getting the word out because I think, for next year, if they have that event, because I think it's something that if you have elementary school-aged children, they would really enjoy it. It's kind of like a really fun, science-themed birthday party. That was the atmosphere there. There was a petting zoo with live reptiles. There was remote control roller derby games and all the classic experiments like, you know, volcanoes and making butterflies out of coffee filters and all the classics that we remember from our childhood, plus a bunch of updated activities. So I highly recommend that for next year. And then the other one, I was able to go to the CTE awards. And just to expand on what Dr. Stone said, there were, I believe there were four students who graduated with a CNA certificate. And that's in addition to completing their regular high school graduation requirements. But they are leaving as 18-year-olds being full-fledged CNAs. This is not like a junior version of that skill. They get the full accreditation. And there were seven students who graduated from the fire program with their requisite training. There were a number of students who earned their credentials in welding and cabinet making and audio, some of the software like Photoshop and some of the other ones that are familiar or not familiar to us. Early education, it's just, it kind of, I feel like it answers the call that we hear from the community to make sure that we're preparing our students for life after graduation, recognizing that not everyone is going to go to a four-year university. We are trying to make sure that our high school serves those students who are going to go to a four-year university, but also provides a way for kids to get their education concurrently with their high school graduation, or high school requirements, so that when they graduate, they can either directly enter the workforce or maybe do like a two-year program locally. So I'm really proud of what our school's been able to accomplish.
I also want to kind of talk about that, but I want to kind of take it in a little bit of a different direction. Because we can all say great things about our district, right? We go to these events and it's that. It's hard to get independent data to say we're doing a great job. It's out there, folks. Let me kind of tell you two places. The Auditor General does a report every year for every high school district in the state of Arizona, talking about how they spend their funds and doing a comparison. Went through that. We look very good compared to other districts. You know, we spend more in instruction than we do on administration, those types of things. More of our money gets to our students. So I'd encourage you to look at that. The other thing I'd encourage you to look at is the U.S. News World report. They rank all the high schools in the entire country, and they do it based on student achievement. This can be both, you know, going to college, getting AP, things like that. So let me kind of tell you where we're at here. If you take the Parker, Parker, Kingman, Mojave, Lake Havasu area, we are the number one high school by far in this area. So that kind of speaks to what this team is doing with their every student every day. If you talk about public schools and you extend it to flagstaff, we are number two. Not bad. That's a lot of high schools, folks. We have some comparables in state where, you know, it's always harder to compete with the Tucson and Phoenix schools because we have, you know, we don't pay the teachers as much. We don't have as much budget out here. It's hard to compete. However, we do. We are in the top 30% in the state. We have some great comparables. We're ahead of Dyce Art and Dobson High School, which are high schools in Phoenix that have a lot of resources. We're ahead of the Tucson High Magnet School in Tucson who works STEM directly with U of A. So we do better than those, according to U.S. News and World Report. And once again, that's not us just saying it here. That's independent data out there, which I always love independent data. Just wanted to share that with you all.
Do we have any board suggestions for future agenda items?
Other than what I mentioned too. Ms. Sedagel?
I'd like to revisit where we were at with the update to the library when we expanded one-to-one last year. We talked about some renovations. We should look into that again.
Okay, we'll put that on the next agenda. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 The meeting is adjourned.